Alright, it's 6:00 PM. A call of the meeting to order. Card and roll call and establishment of the forum.
Cindy Vitane here. Mary Beth Shaw.
Here.
Bart Stotts.
Here.
Mike Whitner.
Here.
Matt Crowe. Dylan Helmanstein.
Here.
And I'm here as well.
Can you please, before we start, join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Pretty sure that's all over here.
All clear? Just had to make sure. We have three residents in attendance tonight.
Alright, and moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of June 12th, 2023?
I'll make the motion. Start.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Onto district business. I believe we have Burke live with us to discuss some ongoing solar options for the district. And I don't know if you want to tee up some other conversation back and forth.
Sure. I'll try to do it relatively succinctly. Obviously, we've been engaged in this dialogue for quite some time. When we, the board, the district initially had our plans, we found we had a great parcel located for this because it was land that we really didn't have any other use for. Unfortunately, as we started to dig a little bit deeper, realized that was not a viable option. So we had to DNR to conduct the wetland delineation study. They marked that line, which roughly if you drop off the hillside here, on the northwest side of our property, the wetland is right at the bottom of that hillside next to the Wolf Run Trail. Subsequently, we've had discussions with our attorney for boardman and clerk regarding the possibility to get a variance on the 75-foot setback from the edge of the wetland. And I really think part of the question tonight, and I know you've discussed this some without me, so I apologize if this is glaringly obvious. I think some of your discussion tonight after you hear from Burke tonight is to even imagine to yourself if that variance would be successful and we were able to locate inside that 75-foot setback, is that still what you want to do and what you think is the best use of the land that we have in the district? Because right now, we're in a pretty landlocked position and any green space that we have that's usable is quite precious. So I just think it's important to consider that, that even if you think the variance could be successful and we could start the panels basically right at the tree line, by the time we go over 40-ish yards from those trees, is giving up that green space something that you want to do? And I think you just need to weigh that based on what Burke says and what he's talked about with his experience with the roof mount projects. There's pros and cons to all of this, and I understand that. But at the end of the day, it's still a great time to be pursuing solar. The federal incentives are roughly 35% to 40% of the project. So, don't give up. Burke, hopefully that wasn't too much of a tangent, but if you're there, if you could unmute yourself and kind of give the board a little lay of the land on what your thoughts are regarding roof mount, what that would entail, and we'll just kind of go from there.
Sure. Well, you know, I like the idea of using land you didn't have much use of. Unfortunately, that's probably because it was wet at times and, you know, kind of past the tree line there where your fields were. But, but I guess, to me, like when you start like using part of your, the land that you would use for, you know, recreation or expansion, there seems to be a pretty big cost with that. And, I mean, from our perspective, probably 95% of the commercial projects that we do, since we're not doing utility scale solar and a lot of our work has historically been in, like, within the city of Madison, most of our installs have been roof mounted. You know, almost all of our residential and, like I was saying, probably 90% of our commercials. So we have a lot of experience installing on roofs and we haven't had any significant problems with that. I can only think of, you know, one roof where the roofer made a mistake on the seam and we had to pull up a few panels for them to access that and repair it. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put a solar array on a roof that you're not expecting to get, you know, say 20 years out of because there would be significant cost at some point when the roof's being replaced to remove the modules and reinstall them. But it's, the cost of installing a roof is probably, I just ran some quick numbers, but I think we could probably install the roof for about $850,000. How old was it? About $850,000, so there'd be about a $60,000 savings. And that would go a long way towards, you know, especially if that money was invested or something and, you know, in 20 years, that $60,000 is worth a lot, a lot more essentially. So yeah, I guess those are, those are kind of my thoughts. I, I've never had the same resistance to installing on a roof, but I can understand where you are, where you're located, there's like a lot of land and so it's really appealing to not, you know, have to worry about the potential future ramifications of removing and reinstalling. But, you know, I think a properly installed system with slip sheets underneath each pan, a reasonable distributed way, I don't think, if anything, it may actually increase the life of your roof because a lot of the sun is going to be blocked. You're not going to get that same heating and UV. Yeah, I guess, I can't see anybody's reactions. Kind of talking into the ether, but it might be easiest to just answer questions and then I could kind of focus my, Jerry?
Real quick, Burke, I just, I'll set the stage. They're very skeptical of what you're saying, so be prepared.
Okay, fair enough.
Just kidding. Everyone was nodding and listening carefully. I do have one clarifying question though, before we just open it up for general questions. And I apologize, I did not notice this about four or five hours ago. I noticed it in preparation as I was walking down here. The rendering that you sent, I'm looking at it right now on my screen. I shared it with all of the board members. I don't know if they have looked at it. However, what you sent actually, those panels right now as you have rendered, that's on the middle school roof. The elementary, the elementary building is actually extended off, so like in the top left corner there, where you can see the shot put area, that's, and then there's an old volleyball court. That area up there on the top left is where the elementary school is now situated. So...
Okay. I, I was in a, I didn't have much time to work on it today. I've been out of town all weekend. So I, I, I think Helioscope had that old image and I failed to, what I can do tomorrow is superimpose the, the renderings of the addition onto that. I don't know if we have any, I don't know, maybe there's even some aerial images available, you know, through the county or something, but I can do a new layout. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
At least it gives you an idea of the area involved.
It, it does for sure, and I guess the reason I, I think this would be of interest, especially to the board, is with that footprint of the new elementary school and then just knowing estimates on square footage, I'm cautiously optimistic that with that new roof on the elementary school, to your comment, that yes, most, if not all, of the panels will be able to be located on that roof, which is obviously the newest roof that we have, and it's a common location. So yes, if you could please do that and send that on at your earliest convenience for the board to take a look at because the new elementary school on one level is about between like 80,000 and 82,000 square feet and the middle school is slightly less than that. So I just wanted to share that before we went any further and thank you for then updating that, sending it to us when you get a chance. Questions?
What's our roof on the elementary school made of? Is it rubber? Is it gravel? What is it?
Rubber. There's not gravel membrane on top of that.
Okay.
So I mean, I, I don't know like the exact whatever, but I mean, obviously Bill Sullivan has been involved in all of these conversations and emails that we've had back and forth with Burke and with PSI. When we went to referendum with PSI, this is something that we talked about, is wanting to make sure that whatever the roof system was that they installed was able to handle the load of potentially doing a roof mount solar project. In recent weeks, we've had emails back and forth between Mike Betchard, who was our project manager, Burke, myself, and Bill Sullivan, where they've talked about loads and things like that. That seems to be an odd issue at this point, that it will obviously work. But yes, typically, when you put in a new roof, you're going to get a 20 to 25-year warranty. In some cases, they all live that warranty. And we've had a number of roofs in this district that when I started, were well out of warranty and we didn't have to replace them immediately. We've lived through until now we've had dollars available to fix those roofs. The gym's actually a case of that right now. The project that's happening on the north gym, or south gym, excuse me, that's one that was out of warranty and now we're replacing it this summer.
Just a note, if you want to get the new image, if you go to the DCI map on Bay County, when you put in the address, you'll be able to see the outline of the new elementary school. And that'll give you the building.
Yeah, it can give you a pretty good layout, drawing from that.
Yeah.
Optimize some assumptions about HVAC and then if it looks promising, I guess we can come back out and, you know, take measurements of where all the equipment is so that we can, you know, give you a layout that, you know, accommodates access to the HVAC and anything else on the roof that people would need to easily get to.
Can you give me a ballpark figure of what in 25, 30, 35 years, whatever it is for the roof to be replaced, what the cost would be to pull that solar array down and reinstall it?
I don't know what it's going to cost in 20 or 25 years. And I should probably check with our repair department because they handle removal and reinstall, but I would guess like now, you'd probably be looking at somewhere around $100,000, $150,000 to remove and reinstall, especially if there was a roof area adjacent that we could temporarily set the equipment on so we didn't have to crane it off and back on.
How long would we have the solar panel on their roof if we installed it? Would it last 20 years? I mean, then when, when would we have to replace it?
Um, yeah, the, the solar modules have a 25-year power output warranty.
So I guess you could decide, you know, let's say you've got 25, 30 years out of the roof, you could decide if it's worth reinstalling or just decommissioning it at that point. You would have recouped your cost. But, I mean, we, we know of systems that are 25, 30 years old, still producing 80% of the original rate of power, which is, the warranty is that manufacturer says it'll produce 80% of its original power at 25 years. So I, I think it's conceivable that you could remove and reinstall it and get another 10 or 15 years at, at 25 years. You know, just be a matter of running the numbers if, if it's worth upgrading at that point.
When it comes to that reinstallation process, what type of contractors do we go to for that process? Is it back to you? Is it back to other contractors? Is it a specialized process?
Um, we, we handle all of our removals and reinstalls ourselves.
And then...
It's mostly, it's mostly been homeowners with asphalt roofs. I mean, since we started in 2002, we haven't had, we haven't had a lot of big commercial removal and reinstalls. I can only think of one. I wasn't actually the project manager on it, but I do remember it went pretty smoothly. We were able to temporarily load everything on an adjacent roof. They put down a new membrane and then we were able to reinstall it, you know, back up on the roof that it was on.
I know that it's a new industry still, but I've heard of folks who have problems with old panels once they decommission them and it costs a lot to dispose of them. Do you know, like, if it were today, this type of project to dispose of the panels, how much that would cost?
I, I don't know. And, and the few systems that we've decommissioned, there was a good resale market for the modules because they were still producing power. The few, the few damaged panels that we've had, we've been able to resell for the cells. So we've never had to pay anything to recycle panels to date. I'm guessing that the market's going to improve and you would think that there'd be demand for the aluminum frames and the, and the refined silicon. So if there is a cost now for a large-scale decommissioning, I'm guessing that cost would go down over time, you know, as the facilities develop. But I can't really answer that because we've never had to, we've always found a market for used equipment.
When, when you go down south, you see a lot of these like parking areas that are parking lots with these, what I would call lean-to type of like posts and like a, a sort of simple roof with panels on them to shade the parking lots. And like, obviously, that's probably more practical in the south, but it, how, what is the cost effectiveness of those kind of structures? And, and, you know, do people use those in Wisconsin as like an alternative way of lifting a solar panel without putting it on a golden roof?
Yeah, we've, we've only done a couple of shade structures. I, I suspect that down south, they're looking at, they were considering some way to, or they're, they're adding some value to shading the cars.
Right.
Um, when they did their calculus, because when we priced it, it's added a lot to the cost. Uh, you know, like almost 50% increase because here you've got snow loading that requires a pretty substantial structure, especially if it's up, you know, 12, 15 feet in the air.
Sure.
You know, we've, we've done some short sections, but like doing a large-scale, you know, parking lot install with, you know, it, it might bring the cost up to, you know, 1 and 1.3, 1.4 million dollars from, you know, even just a regular ground mount, which would be closer to a million dollars installed. So I, I think, I think in, in, where it's, where it's extremely hot for longer periods of the year, they're probably looking at, hey, this is a plus for our customer and so this, this premium extra cost is justified. But if, if you didn't, if you weren't able to factor in like some significant value for that shading, it would reduce the cost effectiveness pretty considerably.
Sure. I think it's important too, just to remind ourselves relative to this conversation, part of the reason or part of the way we got down this path was the, the dollars that we earmarked or put towards our Fund 46, which is our capital projects facility budget. And those dollars, when they're placed in that account, need to be used for capital projects. And when you think of most capital projects, whatever it may be, you're typically spending money upfront, but then you're not getting any return on your investment. I mean, other than aesthetically it looks pleasing, we have new floors, that we feel good about it. It improves the environment perhaps, the learning environment. But this is one of the very few things that we as a school district, that you as a school district could allocate dollars that basically need to be spent on facilities, but then on an annual basis are going to basically provide you a revenue stream of $50,000, $60,000. As energy costs go up, well, then the dollar amount is going to go up. So I think just the context of all of this and your due diligence is, is admirable. At the same time, remember the fact that these are one of, this is one of the very few things that we as a school district could utilize dollars for that is actually going to provide us, yeah, $60,000. Well, that's, that's two-thirds of a teaching position. And we're using capital project dollars to help fund a Fund 10 expense. And people will forever be our most expensive thing, as they should be. They're our most important thing. So the 20, 25 years down the road thing, well, if you look at $60,000 a year for 20 years and you paid for the system with dollars that could only be used for facilities, you have now freed up a million dollars of operational dollars that you could use for other things.
And we are, we're not financing this project. This is money saved and so next year, immediately, we'll have that one year's worth of operational that we can do.
Save your Fund 10?
Immediately, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I just want to say for everybody here, I also heard that, you know, putting it up on the roof will have benefits to the roof itself also. Heard that from electricians. I think that what are, at least for me on the board, is our last capital referendum, one of the reasons we cited for not investing in the elementary schools was the repairs of things like the roofs. And so when community members then hear that, maybe we will put the solar panels up on the roof, they are hesitant because we just had to have a capital referendum because of roof problems. But now we have a different roof and it's newer and it's not been deferred for maintenance yet. And so just trying to make sure, I know everything and that we have confidence in this project. Because I agree, I mean, as soon as we invest in this project, we will be able to spend less on building and more on the people and more on the education. And that's what I'll be telling people is as soon as we have this up and running, we become more efficient. Where tax dollars are being raised for education, are being spent on education more specifically. And just want to make sure though that we can still justify, we're putting it up on the roof, but this one, this one is built well and not deferred maintenance, so.
Yeah, without a doubt. And I, like I said, I completely understand and I respect what you guys are doing with this process and the questions that you're receiving. It's just important to understand the finances of this and like these dollars in this capital projects budget. Even if you chose to invest them in other things, there's next to nothing that's actually going to provide revenue basically, which this is one of the few areas that you could invest in that's, that's good enough.
Burke, can you talk a little bit about your thoughts on the correspondence with the different individuals from the DNR and just your initial thoughts and kind of feedback? It, it was kind of hard interpreting between all the different layers and different people kind of chiming in, but if you could just talk a little bit about what your, your thoughts were and kind of if the path has led us towards the roof mount being the optimal choice or if there's still any hope in, in doing anything else.
Sure. Well, we went to pull permits, construction permits with the county and having built mostly in urban areas, we haven't, or if we were doing a ground mount, it was clear that, it was pretty clear if there was a wetland because it was like wet and there was like the typical vegetation you would see. Whereas, whereas this area looked like maybe like a low-level floodplain or something, it didn't look like a wetland to me. So it didn't, didn't occur to us until we went to pull permits and the county said, hey, you have to be 75 feet back from the wetland boundary. And the county said, hey, this, the, the wetland boundary might even extend further than what the DNR had drawn out. It seemed like, to me, like the DNR was pretty reasonable. They put the boundary right along the, you know, the, that sort of that low area below the fields. But the, the impression I get is that it would be difficult to, to get a variance based on what the lawyers said. And then I know there apparently a couple other solar farms have gotten a variance, but these are giant utility scale projects. And from, from the email I read, the, in order to infringe upon that 75-foot setback, they had to like create twice as much wetland somewhere else as the area that they were occupying within the 75 feet. So it sounded like a pretty complicated, expensive solution. And I think, you know, when you're looking like a, like a giant utility scale solar farm, they could say, well, there's no other weird place to put this. But I think the county would say, hey, you've got this empty roof. You know, this is a viable alternative. I, I guess my overall impression is that it would be time-consuming and possibly expensive to, to get a variance that would let us get the solar arrays right up against that tree line. And then you're still going to be taking up a significant amount of your field area. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. So I guess we're, we're at the point where we need to decide whether we as group feel comfortable with the roof mount.
Can I just have one clarification? Did you say that the life expectancy of the solar project is about 25 to 30 years? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. That's, the, the lifespan of the modules is 30-plus years. And the, the racking, the wiring can all be expected to last, you know, 25-plus years. The only, the only part, major part you're probably going to be replacing within 25 years or repairing is the inverters, the electronics that convert the, the roof power to great compatible power. So we've got, I mean, I can just speak to, you know, we have a, well, I would say 95-plus percent of the systems that we installed when we started here in 2002 and are still operational. And I've talked to people that I worked with in California and a lot of the systems we installed, the vast majority that were installed in the, you know, mid-1990s, the early adopters, they're still, the modules are still producing power. In fact, I've seen some pictures of some of the off-grid systems and it's sort of a, a history of solar modules because they just kept, you know, adding on as the cost came down, but they kept those original, you know, panels in the system.
The age we're dealing with right now isn't very good. Solar panels just going to say... Well, and who knows in 25 years what the technology is going to achieve.
I'm sure she has.
So one last question, Burke. You said that there was a little bit of increased production when it's on that roof because we can face it in a better direction?
Yeah, I hadn't, I hadn't really thought a whole lot about the roof until just recently. Is the addition southeast, or is it, is it oriented like the way I've shown the panels?
So the addition itself is actually, I would say it's on like the northwest corner of the building, but the orientation in terms of how it's tilted, it basically comes directly off that corner of that middle school and then is kind of a square, if you will, or rectangle off that corner. So...
Oh, okay. So is the, I mean, are the, are like the left and the right side west and east? Generally, we want to follow the lines of the, the edge of the roof because going diagonal where you have like different length rows gets, gets expensive and complicated and it's hard to analyze structurally. But if, if, if we had the panels facing due south, they'd produce a few, just 3% more power than if they were at the angle that I've shown in that drawing on the existing roof.
Yeah, you're going to have a long run, running from east to west of long straight areas, especially on the north side of the building. So if those panels were tilted towards the So if those panels were tilted towards the south, which obviously they would be on that north side of the building, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I mean, we have a straight run down a hallway there that's probably, God, a hundred and fifty yards. I mean, that's, that's a long run on that side of the building. Yeah, if you can take a look at that, like I said, and just give us an updated idea on the rendering. I, I don't think it's overly complex. There's not a lot of, obviously it's a flat roof, just like pretty much all of them are in schools. There's not a lot of different elevations. There's just a couple, the gymnasium, and then we have a few classrooms where the roof's a little bit higher because we had to get some windows in and the clear story. But for the most part, there's not a ton of stuff up there. There's a lot of the mechanicals are actually upstairs in like a mezzanine area by the gym. There are obviously some chillers and some things up on the roof, but a lot of that stuff was placed inside in that mezzanine. So hopefully that helps with your planning too.
What is the difference as well from where we were going to have it, having to have run that cable and everything to the school? Are we going to see any difference in the production because we don't have to run it as far?
Well, we were going to, we were going to size the system to only allow at peak power production a few percent power loss. So it's not going to make a huge difference. Up on the roof, you're going, you're going to have a little bit higher snow loss, snow cover losses. I can, I can run the modeling, but I'm guessing the ground mount versus the roof are, it's going to be within a few percent of the same production. The, the roof, the nice thing about the roof, there's no, when we were looking at going behind the, the tree line, we were going to accept some shading so that we could keep the system more closer and not run out of space. So I think it's going to be pretty close to a wash.
Any other questions?
Well, part of the reason that there's a dollar savings going on the roof versus the ground is because it's actually quicker to install the ground. The rack is a little bit more expensive, but a lot of the cost was that long electrical run. That was somewhat compensated by being able to use higher voltage. We have to use, by code operated at a lower voltage on the roof. And generally, the higher voltage you can operate at, the smaller the wiring. But there, there's, it's less that there was a power loss because of the distance. It was just more cost.
Anything else you want to, Burke? Well, is it safe to say that we're all feeling okay about the roof mount after this? Does anyone have any other concerns right now? Well, I guess as Jordan started the conversation by acknowledging our fearlessness, not to give up, I think we need to give you a lot of credit and kudos for sticking with us. Certainly, it's been a roller coaster, but we're, we're very thankful and grateful that you've stuck with us and excited about the endeavor ahead. Is there anything else you have for us, Burke?
No, if, I'm, I'm happy to help support the school district however I can. So if, if you do decide to pursue the variance, I'll, you know, provide whatever information I can for that. If you decide to go with the roof mount, I'll get you some preliminary layout drawings in the next day or two. And if we need to tweak that a little bit, you know, to, to put it on the roof areas that have the newest roofs, if we can't fit it all on the, the newest addition, you know, I'm happy to work with you to, you know. And it'd be nice not to have to downsize it, but if we do need to downsize it to get everything to fit where you want it is, we're, we're happy to revise the system and, you know, provide a reasonable change order for the reduced cost.
Well, I'm seeing all positive nods in the direction of the roof mount. So if you would go ahead and maybe update the rendering and any rough numbers, put together a kind of a snapshot or an updated sheet of what that project will look like. I think we have, you have our full support on that.
Okay, great. Well, thanks so much. Thanks for continuing to work with us and I'm hoping we can get there.
We're getting there.
A really big celebration when it's up and up.
Sounds good, Burke. Burke, just one quick thing. I know I told you, my time is running short here at Wisconsin Heights. That's why I've been looping Bill Sullivan in, our maintenance director. I talked to our IT director today as well. And as of Wednesday, my emails will get forwarded to the gentleman that will be the interim superintendent for next year as well. So when you send emails, you can send them to Bill. And then for the time being, until you have, Craig Gerlock is his name, until you got a chance to meet him, if you just send the email to me and to Bill, it'll go to Bill and to the interim superintendent who is starting, I believe, next week at some point. So if you can make sure you send it to both of those addresses, it'll get to who it needs to get to. And then they can share that information with the board as the, as the work ensues here shortly, hopefully.
Well, I appreciate all your effort on this project, Jordan's, you know, it's, it's been incredible. And it takes a lot of dedication to see a big project like this, you know, through to completion. I, I hope, I hope you're still involved in, in some level.
I can come back to the party.
I'll come back home, I'll invite myself. But no, I appreciate it with you as well. And I think one thing I appreciate about this district and about this board is that they're, they're not afraid to do things that not everyone's willing to do. And this is just, to me, is a smart thing. And schools getting involved in solar, I think this is like the tip of the iceberg. And more and more schools are going to get involved in this, and it's going to become more and more normal. And we pride ourselves in kind of having a vision here and, and always waiting for everyone else to do things. So it's a testament to the district as well. So thanks for your support.
All right.
All right, great.
Thanks for.
Well, that's it, unless there's anything else. Thanks again for your time.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right.
Good discussion.
Yeah. Anything else to say?
I wish we were out of being.
Just going to say that.
Just going to throw that out there.
Just going to say.
I've had my brother.
A variance of a, a different county now instead of.
I tell you what, Jay County is the only one where you have to go through nine million hoops to get this, even the smallest project done. But that's okay because they're trying to preserve what they have.
All right, anyone else?
No.
Okay.
Good stuff.
Yes. Who can add then? District business personnel. Do I have a motion to combine five point one and five point two for approval?
So who would.
Does anybody want to add anything about higher? Aaron?
I'm very excited to have him come forward to teach in Washington, so he has lots of interesting stories. Has been through a coup, so that's fun. But have already been emailing with him and he teaches U.S. history and is already outboard to go to a summer institute the second of July.
Right, awesome. Perfect, very cool. Well, welcome Aaron and Sandy. And any other discussion on that? Aaron Dunn, Cindy, yes. Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Dylan.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Alvin.
Yes, as well.
All right, six point one, district business and employee relations. We have the second reading of the employee handbook for July one implementation. Sure by now we have plenty of opportunities to recruit. Will Sullivan be there? Any last thoughts?
I have a motion to approve, okay?
Second.
Right. Have you read that then? Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Alvin, yes, as well. And seven point one, same second reading of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student fees. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
All right, any further discussion? Last. All right, here you're done. Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I thought yes as well. Eight point one, some exciting news that I'll let Jordan discuss.
Yeah, well, I just talked about we're not afraid to try things that maybe some others are afraid to try. So in this search to try to continue to be a place that is attractive to young staff members, in particular in this case, to recruit and retain, we've really noticed, and obviously I think you probably have noticed too, there's, there's definitely a childcare shortage in this area. It's part of the reason why we started the before and after school program partnership with Kids Club. And just as we've, our staff is continuing to get younger, we are noticing more and more lengthy leaves. And as our principals talk to their faculty, a lot of times it's not because their teachers or our teachers really want to take that much time off. It's because they can't find childcare. So we have staff members extending their leave for weeks, in some cases beyond what they normally want to be gone. So as we've kind of talked about ways to try to, once again, recruit and retain and keep our staff in front of kids as much as possible, even when you can find yourself, it's very rare that they're able to just step into a classroom and seamlessly deliver instruction like the teacher. So to me, this is a potential win-win opportunity. Our students have their teachers in front of them more often. Our staff has another opportunity for childcare. Just putting myself in their shoes and thinking about one of our children or infants three or four years old, probably more specifically my wife. The ability to see your child potentially during a lunch break, to drop your child off in the building that you work in and pick your child up in a building that you work in at the end of the day, that's just a huge advantage. Scott put together a short overview of kind of what this would look like and the logistics. He's done a wonderful job of kind of planning this out, if you will. And actually, from our building standpoint, this move and kind of this reshuffle really actually serves a positive in that we basically have our kindergarten pod, our first grade pod, our second grade pod, our third grade pod. Then we have one outlier in fourth grade that would be slightly down the hall from the rest of the fourth grade, but then the fifth grade pod. So the building really works out nice with the layout and who would be assigned to what rooms. Before and after school room would be directly next to the infant care room. So I guess at this point, I, I just think from the district standpoint, for those reasons that I just mentioned, this is something that can be very positive. We surveyed the staff. There's a lot of interest in this. And once again, I don't think this is something that's going away. The problem is just going to fix itself in the next year or two. So this is our attempt to do something proactive. And hopefully that's meaningful to our staff and to the community.
So do we have to guarantee a certain amount for it to be viable for them to actually carry out the program?
We haven't gotten that far, I would say, in the logistics. If the board approves the concept, basically then they will start the promotion process and communication with our staff members. Given the size, I don't know if you noticed that we actually basically were capped at this point based on size at around eight. The survey indicated there's pretty strong interest. So I think we probably would be able to provide something that's viable for Kids Club to run this year based on the interest that we have from our staff members. But I can't answer that question right now. Obviously, if there's one or two, that's probably not cost effective for them.
So then if, if that were the case, would they, because right now it's aimed at our school district, would they consider expanding beyond our halls to get more kids in to make.
Well, I think they would consider. At this point, it's, we haven't considered. Because the last thing they want to do is open up a new box to a community childcare center. So I think that's a decision you'll have to make in conjunction with your administrators down the line. If you, if three or four sign it up, it's not financially viable, well then do you open it up to others? Yeah, it would be a, definitely a lot, because there would be a lot of interest, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
This is just another thing that, you know, makes us, you know, stand out from a lot of other schools because, you know, we went to the all-day 4K. You know, sometimes when I tell people that, they're like, really? Like, yeah, like we went out four day, you know, all day. And, you know, they're just flattery acid in the fact that, you know, we have a school that does that. And, you know, adding something like this, if it works out. I mean, that's, that's another hiring point. Like, that's like, oh, look, you know, we have, you know, onsite childcare for, you know, staff members. So, I mean, and, and I would love to, you know, have it go, but then possibly get bigger too, to where you could, you know, kind of expand on that, you know, to have more than eight children too. But childcare is not, it's not for the faint of heart because that is a one of, I think it's probably one of the toughest spots to be in because it's, but, you know, the rules and regulations, you know, as long as you follow them. I mean, obviously you're dealing with children, but it's also very hard for people to, you know, afford to pay what, you know, some places are. And I was just talking with one of my people I work out with, and she's four months pregnant, and they actually found their daycare six months ago, even before the COVID pandemic. Because, and she has to drive forty-five minutes out of her way just to go there because they couldn't find anything that was, you know, within their budget. So.
Well, I think, well, then I think about putting it to schools that we have the infrastructure already here. And certainly we need all standards.
Yep, it's going to help our staff out, you know, they don't have to drive to a daycare. And then they're like, oh, shoot, you know, I left five minutes late, so now I'm going to get to my daycare five minutes late. And, you know, it'll, it'll be a great, a great thing. So I'm, I'm hoping that there's enough people to have this go around. So that would be wonderful.
Any other questions?
So I know this is going in the future. That eight licensed capacity, is that because of the space that they're going to be renting out? Or is it the staff?
Has to do with size primarily, yes. So we need to determine what a square for each child. And that's where it's at right now.
So many teachers per child do. And, yep, babies, you can have less and less, you know, number per teacher. So a lot of those different numbers coming into play with that.
This is part of the reason I was editorialized. I can't help it. It's my last meeting. It's part of the reason why when 4K comes up every year in the state budget, but then it gets stonewalled by childcare industry. The reason why is because, yes, you could put a lot more kids in a room and you can have a lot fewer teachers. The ratios are higher. So childcare centers typically make their money off of older children, four-year-olds, three-year-olds in some cases. Their margin is much tighter with younger kids because of the regulations with the industry. So every time full day 4K comes up and it seems like such a common sense answer that, yes, we would support that because the research is so strong for the impact of a good 4K program on communities and societies. But, you know, we can't do it because the lobby comes out and says, well, if you do that, we're going to lose all of our profit. So another conversation for another day.
Yeah, I did a project with Oshkosh Area Childcare Alliance. And that was the discussion too of the schools doing 4K versus the, the whatever. But I think for us, like you said, to be able to give that to our staff, I think it's going to be fantastic for us in trying to get people to work here. So I'm just very thankful that we have a relationship that can grow in this way. You know, so thanks to all you administrators for that.
Kids Club, Scott, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, they, they did a phenomenal job with the operations of the first year of the before and after school program. When you bring in a partner, you, you take that risk a little bit. And generally, the less you hear about them, the better it is. It hurt very little on Kids Club. And I can tell you in the past when we had other situations, it wasn't always that case. And Scott and I would have to have many conversations just regarding how things are going and how we can possibly try to make this better. But this year, we had next to no conversations regarding that type of thing. So they must have provided a quality service.
I remember when they came in when we first were talking about them, and they were just so excited.
I mean, even the before and after school is, I mean, it's great to have that, you know, like I said, especially for, you know, some of the kids that, you know, if their sibling has to come in earlier for something and parents can't drive them off, you know, at least they have someplace to go and, you know, stay away with any kind of, you know, if an older sibling has something after school for an hour, it's, you know, at least they have someplace to go. You know, it, it helps the parents. It, it just, yeah, it, it just. it, it just shows that, you know, we, we definitely care about our kids, not only during school hours, but after and before school hours, so, you know, it's just another indication that we do, so.
So, Scott, were they at capacity for their program? Did they have a waiting list?
From the for and after?
They do, yes. Yeah, they have waiting lists for that.
That's kind of a health thing. If, if there's a sick day issue because they're in the building and might have a communicable thing to kids older than them, is, is that adjudicated through their own pediatrician? Since they're not technically a student here, or is that something that Katie or, or the nurse's office would be involved with?
That's a good question.
It is a good one.
My assumption is it would be handled through their private provider and their family because, I mean, basically, what we're providing is the space.
Sure.
That's what I like about this agreement. We're not in the childcare business, we're in the facility rental business.
Instead of, if they did have an emergency or something during the day, a health emergency, an injury or something like that, that's, that's.
Well, I mean, to that end, obviously, so, let's just, worst-case scenario, there's a health emergency, then the communication between them and Scott, I mean, the notion of like a cold, per se, so emergency personnel can safely get down the hall, get the child, get him out of the building, but we've had those situations with our own students, our own faculty, we're pretty well versed in what those processes look like in like an emergency situation. But, you know, to your kind of more general care, to me, those are the situations they work through with their parents and with their private, you know, insurance providers, whatever.
And that would be something, too, that, you know, you'd have to make sure that they, you know, kind of lay out, you know, in this contract process, too, is how, you know, how they're going to, you know, take, you know, facilitate when those types of things happen, you know, obviously, you want to know exactly how they go, and I'm, I'm pretty sure that they're already, you know, they already probably have all of that figured out, I'm sure, but, you know, just for the, you know, the school's part of it, and then, you know, for their own safety, because if they don't follow it and the state finds out, well, now we got a whole other ball of problems.
See, there's a reason for those scripts.
They want a hard-hitting.
We appreciate you, Matt.
That's a great question. All right, so do I have a motion to approve a partnership with Kids Club Learning Centers to provide infant four-year-old care, infant two-four-year-old care, for staff members onsite?
I made the motion. Sorry.
Oh, geez, I was just trying.
I know. I know. We were all trying.
We were all trying, we all wanted to get in on that one.
Well, thanks again to, yeah, everybody involved in that.
Definitely.
Just to reiterate anything, we can provide a different capacity for our staff to incentivize the district. It's awesome. So, Mary Dunn?
Oh, yeah, I, you were looking at me.
I was. Yeah, Cindy. Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Moving on to future meeting dates. Welcome. Just to remind everybody about our board workshop coming up in July, 5:00 PM, so that's an alternate week, but we'll have an agenda posted on that soon. Otherwise, I just want to say it's Jordan's last meeting. Woo! To extend thanks and gratitude for your leadership and contributions, and it's been a fast few years, but when you lay out all the accomplishments and successes through the turbulent times of COVID, I mean, we're really coming out on a positive, and again, to extend thanks and kudos to you, and I don't know if anybody else wants to throw in anything, but.
I worked with you, you know, for the whole time you were here, and it's just incredible to have you, you know, right at the beginning of your, of your superintendeeship, I guess is what you'd call it, and, you know, I just need to see you grow as well and to see everything that you brought to this school, so I wish you the best of luck, you know.
Yeah, no, I just, I also thank you, I kind of mentioned this, I think, in the email that I sent out that I forwarded to the board as well, never, never naive to the fact that work's never perfect, life is never perfect, especially important stuff, it's hard, there's a reason why not everyone can do it in a leadership position. So, I just, I really feel fortunate that this is where I had my first superintendency. I'll never forget the fact that I didn't know where Mazamane was either, so when I drove here the first time for my interview, I called my wife on the way back, and I said, it's like my grandpa and grandma's house, like, there's hills and bluffs all over, it's really cool. And just appreciate, yeah, what you're able to accomplish, and that's what I'll take with me forever. I'll always look back on these six years fondly and with a lot of pride. And I think as a school district, we need to continue to tell our story and make people understand and know how good of a district we have, but at the same time, we can't be comfortable or complacent, and that's what we talked about with our professional learning communities and with our student learning, with our girls, it's like, well, just because we're, we're at a good place doesn't mean we can't continue to get better. So, I just, I wish you guys the best moving forward. I certainly now know where Mazamane is in Blackburn, and we'll keep an eye on the district, and we'll always care about this place because it was great for me and my family, so thank you for the opportunity.
Maybe you'll be at the CISA booth at the convention.
I don't know. I'll start having to figure out what exactly my new job is in a week, so.
It's a little by the sun party, though.
Oh, yes, definitely. PSI will just extend.
Well, I don't know, PSI and I will now kind of be competitors. Because our largest division is facilities, and we do a lot of facility studies, and we have construction management professionals on our staff, we do a lot of focus on energy projects.
So, you got insider knowledge on your department.
Jim's probably not happy.
We will cheers you outside.
So, maybe I'll throw the party, get Jim out of. No, thank you once again, and like I said, I appreciate it, and we'll always make fun of Wisconsin, it's, it's a good run.
Best wishes on your, your next adventure.
Adventure.
Yeah. All right, well, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Cindy?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Angie?